Is the whole area of the grade six DARE program. Over the course of the last year and a half, there's been a review of the program. And what has come out of that review is that in fact it was time to revisit and move in a direction for a different program. So this evening, both John and Jeff are here to take us through the Bravo program, building, respect, attitudes, and values with others. So welcome, Jeff and John.
Thank you, Toni, Madam Chair. Certainly a privilege to be here on behalf of Chief Tanner and along with John to speak briefly about our Bravo program. It's certainly been an exciting journey over the last year and a half, and we've had the privilege of having John working as a Halt Region Police Service for just shy of two years now. And among the many programs that John's had the opportunity to talk was the review of our education program. And certainly, I have the easy job tonight. I get to do the introductions and talk a little bit about the background, then John will come up and fill you in a little bit more with respect to the content and curriculum of our new program that we launched. In the year 2012, we started having a hard look at the DARE program, of which your board was a partner with us and delivering for a lengthy number of years. And certainly, known opportunities for DARE program is something that is offered throughout our country and in other places in North America. However, the curriculum is written and is defined in the United States, and we started having a hard look at our region and the needs of our students within the region and within your board. And we were seeing that there were very needs, even within our own region, let alone across North America. And we were looking for something that had some outcomes associated to it, but also some flexibility to cater to the needs of the young people in your school boards. And so after consulting with your board, fellow boards in the region, we were able to make a decision and move forward and develop a program on our own. The advantages that John will get into is that it's a research-based initiative. We also looked at the curriculum that's defined by the Ministry of Education, and it's flexible and adaptable to meet the needs of your young people in your schools. We took some of the solid pieces that were really powerful in the DARE program and were able to build on those. And with respect to where we've been, we were doing a pilot of the program through January of 2013, which is an exciting opportunity to give it a test run in a select number of schools, including those in your board. And we then went back to all the people that we had consultation with in 2012 and 2013 to have a hard look at what was working and what wasn't, and to make the changes. And with the support of your board, we've moved a full rollout now for every grade six student across the region, in your schools, as well as in the public board, and as well as the public and independent schools in the region. So it's a really exciting time as we move towards graduation. And there's some powerful pieces in this program as well that are worth mentioning. We also learned that in our previous program, it was a set number of classes that we delivered to the grade six level, and that was it. Our new program, we have follow-up maintenance pieces from grade seven and grade eight, and also lead into our high school programs where we have a high school office. So that's one of the key pieces about the program. And we also, in those grade seven and eight pieces, talk to your teachers and we're able to cater the needs of ongoing and current issues within that specific school and within that specific classroom, and adapt and meet the needs of your specific teachers. So we sincerely appreciate the support we've had so far when we've delivered to CPIC. But we've also had the opportunity to deliver and consult with the principals, and so far it's been successful. So I'm going to hand off to John, and thank you very much for having me here.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for having us. I'm just going to give you a bit of information regarding the review of DARE, because as Jeff alluded to, DARE was something that was taught here for over twenty years, here, meeting in the Halt Region, in both boards and some of the private schools. And one of the things that I was commissioned to do when I went to the police was to undertake a very extensive review. So I gathered a lot of data, that was research data largely from the United States, and then I did a lot of consultation with different groups throughout the region, teachers, principals, parents, students who were currently taking the program, students who had taken the program three years prior, those types of things. And without going into a lot of detail, I provided you with a sheet, I think, to sort of summarize some of the key findings. And I'll just go over some of those key findings, and at the same time, what I'll be doing is telling you exactly what we've done with Bravo to, I think, enhance and build on what DARE gave us. Basically, DARE was a good program, a good program in terms of providing information to grade six students on drug education and decision-making. So largely, the focus for DARE was with grade six students on alcohol, on tobacco, and on marijuana. But one of the things that was clear from the research and clear from all of the focus groups and all of the people I consulted was, as Jeff alluded to again, the program was fairly narrow and needed to be broadened in terms of the scope of the grades that it covered, which was only grade six, and it was eight lessons. And also, the type of topics that were of more relevancy, let's say, these days to some of the students. So what we did with Bravo is we built on the concepts that were in DARE, the successful concepts of alcohol, tobacco, and marijuana, and our first three lessons still focused on those and making decisions around those. But what we've done as well is we've added some topics that are very important, that you hear about all the time with students now, that focus around cyberbullying, bullying, internet safety, the proper use of social media, and the youth and the law. And so we've extended to that to the grade sixes in terms of those topics, so that it just doesn't focus on the drug and alcohol area. Jeff also talked about seven and eight, so we have extended the program to grade seven and eight. We call it the Bravo Encore when you get to grade seven and eight. There are two lessons in grade seven, and the two lessons can be topics that are negotiated with the ESLO, formerly known as the DARE Officer, the Elementary School Liaison Officer. And they can be negotiated with the officer in terms of topics they feel are relevant to that particular class or that particular school, so there's a lot of flexibility. In grade eight, it's largely the same, however, there are two lessons, but one of them is focusing on a transition piece where we try and connect the grade eight students with the role of the high school liaison officer, who they will meet or encounter in some way when they get to grade nine in all of the schools, including both public and Catholic. So we've added that piece. We've made the program a lot more flexible in terms of instructional methodology and the type of expectations that the students, the teachers will have of the students and the officers will have of the students when they run through the program, because one of the criticisms of DARE was that it was, it didn't accommodate the needs of all learners. And so we have an electronic version for students, perhaps, who are on special programs or on an IEP that, let's say, can't process written information or verbal information the same way as others. And that is, that was a real success in during our pilot that we ran. We also have something where we try and engage parents in discussion with the grade six and seven students, and I'm going to pass some of these documents around if you don't have these. One of the documents we have is called Parent Lesson Extensions, and the parent lesson extensions are, correspond exactly to the topics in the student notebook and in the program that I just referred to. And they are a series of prompting questions and scenarios that parents and students can engage in and start to talk about. And again, we found from the pilot and even in the first couple of months of running the program, that that's been very successful and very, very well received with parents in terms of engaging the students in discussion about all the topics that we talked about. One of the things we wanted to do is try to avoid using all of the data and statistics that DARE used that was American, and that's basically all it was. It was strictly American data, nothing wrong with that, but not as relevant to our students, certainly. So we've drawn on a lot of different sources for data, but probably one of the most important ones is we drew on the Our Kids Network in terms of their report card and their survey that they put out, and took some statistics and information in there out of bullying. We also took some information and statistics that are, it's from the Canadian Center for Substance Abuse, and the Canadian Lung Association also provided us. So you will see examples and snippets of different statistics and questions and information that appear all through the book, the student booklet, as well as that parent extension booklet that I have, that make it more relevant to students in Halton, because it talks about Halton things and Ontario things and statistics. One of the big criticisms of teachers was that DARE didn't come close to meeting many of the curriculum expectations in the Health and Dised document of 2010, which is still the one that is used by elementary schools in the province. And so one of my jobs was to align it with some of those expectations. And again, in your program overview document that we provided for you, you will notice a whole slew of expectations that are met with the Bravo program, that are expectations taken exactly from the Provincial Guide for Health and Disases Education, under the Healthy Living section, it's called. So we've made sure that we've done that, and we've even gone to the Ministry of Education in the Learning Environment Branch and made a presentation to them, sort of getting their blessing, so to speak, and they were quite happy with the way that we had managed to align a lot of the topics with the expectations in the booklet. We've, you might have seen, if you've had a chance to look at the document, that we referenced and we used as sort of some of the sources of our lessons, one of your documents, one that I really liked, and like and still like, the Your Working Together document, especially on the bullying section. So you might notice some similarities in some of the things we talk about, which are generic to bullying, but might have come from notions that were presented in Working Together. Finally, what we've done, as Jeff mentioned, it's been rolled, we had a pilot, it's been rolled out in all of the schools now, and with any good implementation, curriculum implementation, you always look at program evaluation. You want to make sure that the program can be measured and it's giving you the impact that you want. So we have developed a tentative five-year program evaluation plan, which we've had some assistance with. We've met with a group actually that Erica chairs from the Our Kids Network, the Research Committee, and they assisted us in developing a plan over five years to look at implementation in the first year, which we're doing now, and things we might need to tweak to make the program even better in terms of content and the way it's delivered, and then going on in the years to see if we can start to measure any actual changes in student behavior around the topics that we talked about. And we've also, I talked about going to the ministry. We also have been in contact with the ministry, and they're very interested as well in participating in a program evaluation with us beyond the first year, when we start to look at measuring the actual behavior, so into years two to five. So I am going to just leave with you, I'll start then with trustee Marai here. There's a student notebook, which we've had commercially produced. I think you'll be quite pleased with the way it looks and the students write right in there. You have the program overview document, and I've also provided tonight as a sample the parent lesson extensions that I talked to, and the program guide, which is actually the lessons, the ones that the ESLO, the officers use to teach. So it'll have all the concepts, the strategies they're going to use, the resources they're going to use. And this is all done in consultation with the teachers. So the teacher sees the program, talks about it with the, ideally talks about it with the officer, and they're allowed to make accommodations as they need based on some of the topics that are in here. So there's a lot of flexibility to accommodate students. And as I said, it's being received very, very well, and we're quite happy about it. So we continue to look to this board and to the public board and private school for their support as we move through the first stage of implementation this year. I wonder if you have any questions for instance, to Cory or myself?
Thank you very much, John. Trustee Erica.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's an awesome program, and I actually participated in DARE in elementary school. I was curious if you have a similar program for high school students that maybe covers information on different situations that you would face more in high school opposed to elementary school?
With respect to a set program, the curriculum delivery, much like Bravo, we do not, but when we do...
Do you have any other questions, trustee Morrison?
Just a question of John, did you mention there was a piece for the parents in this package?
Yeah, there's a whole book dedicated to the parents, which are called Parent Lesson Extensions.
And will they be given to the parents of the grade seven and eight kids as well?
No, they're, right now, they're just developed for grade six.
Okay.
I'll ask the director to introduce us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have the pleasure of introducing our mental health lead, Patricia Weber Callahan, who tonight is going to talk to us about the progress and the phases being implemented toward the development of our board's mental health strategy. So I'd like to call on Patricia to please come forward and welcome her to this evening.
Sure. Okay. So, what I'd like to do is, I know many of you already know a lot of this, because you have been involved in the process of getting a mental health leader to this board. So I'm just going to go over very quickly, a little bit of history about where we've been and where we're going. And what I particularly want to talk to you about today is the fact that we're moving towards doing a board scan, and I'll tell you what that is about, okay? So, as you all know, because I know that my predecessors, Patricia Cardner and Oliver Foizie, have been here already and have spoken to you over the last couple of years about what mental health is. And through the World Health Organization, we've accepted the definition that it's a state of complete physical, mental, and social well-being. And I won't be reading the slides to you, because I think that you all have a copy of them, and you can do that yourself, but only to tell you how important it is for us to think about mental health as something that is just not mental illness, but something that is a complete and utter picture of who we all are, okay? So that we see mental health on a continuum, and we all have mental health. Some days, our mental health is really good, some days it's not so good, depending upon what's happening in our lives. And unfortunately for our students, sometimes, they go through the continuum and they do end up in a situation where they're suffering from mental illness. And that is, and that's a huge concern for us, because we know that mental illness in students can become a lifelong struggle for them. So when we talk about prevalence of mental health, I think when I looked at this slide, the thing that struck me was the last slide, and I've said this, and I know that there are people in this room who've seen this slide before, and you know that if we look at the thought that one in five young people suffer from mental health issues, and we look at an average high school that has eighteen hundred students, we're looking at over three hundred kids. We're looking at three hundred children who are in need of assistance and who we would like to be there to help. And one of the things that we talk about is the fact that schools are a wonderful place to help students, because we have caring schools, we have caring adults who are there to help kids, and we want to be able to reach out to kids in a way that's effective and a way that makes sense for kids, so that kids feel safe, and we think we can do that. I am involved with School Mental Health Assist, and you all know what that is as well. It's a provincial support team, it's an implementation team that involves three ministries, and that's huge, because for the first time ever, the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care, the Ministry of Education, and the Ministry of Child and Youth Services agree that we need to reach out to children, we need to help kids, and have agreed to work together, have put funds together to help us to meet those needs. So that School Mental Health Assist will provide us with evidence-based programs, they will provide us with resources, they will provide us with coaching and mentoring in order to help our students. And I suppose that this is where I come in, my job as the board's mental health leader. My job is to continue to develop the mental health policy that has been started in this board already, and that has been revised already once. It is to provide leadership, it is to work with the people in our community, not only in our schools, but also the outside community, to look at how we can provide resources, to look at how we can help to get our youth on a path to wellness, and how do we do that? How do youth find the place that they need to go to get help? And so it's my job to try to do that. And in an attempt to do that, I will be working very closely with Patricia Cardner, Oliver Foizie, administrators, child and youth counselors, people who work in our schools, who work with the children. So I'm going to be working very closely with them. And the other piece that's really important is the community piece. This is not a program that we're going to be able to create, one program that is going to last forever, and it's not a program that's going to be about us. It's about us working with the community to meet the needs of our students. Right now, we have relationships with Community Care Access. They provide mental health nurses to our high schools, and those nurses work in conjunction with our social workers and child and youth counselors. In our elementary schools, the Halton region also provides mental health nurses to work with our younger population. So what I talked about before was the three ministries, and it is about interconnectedness. It's about working together. And so ultimately, our goal is to enhance the health and well-being of our children in a place where children feel safe and in a place where children know that they're cared for. We also need to talk about the fact that every board is unique, every school is unique, and every child is unique, so that we're not going to come up with cookie cutter plans that will say that this is what's going to work for everyone, but rather, what we will do is we will provide frameworks so that schools can make decisions about what can work for their population, because maybe what will work down here in Burlington wouldn't work in Halton or Acton. And we have to be sensitive to the fact that each child is a unique being. So, phase one of my mental health work is what I'm doing right now. Right now, I'm working on identifying key stakeholders. I'm involved in finding out what committees run in our board, like Safe and Inclusive Schools, those kinds of things, because they're important, because there's so many different groups that are working in our board right now, and I'm not aware of all of them, I'm just starting to learn. And I have to tell you that the superintendents have been very open and welcoming to me and inviting me to come out to their committees, inviting me to come to them, to talk about the work that they do, so that I can understand what's happening in our board, so that we can work together. So what I need to do is to assess initial capacity, and what that's about is, I need to find out where we're at. What are we doing right? What are our needs? What are our strengths? What are our priorities? What are we missing? And that's my priority for this year. And it is really going to take me most of the year to do this, because what I need to do is I need to do a board scan. And I had hoped that it would be done before the break, but I'm not sure that it will. I live in hope. So what I will do is, and through Mental Health Assist, School Mental Health Assist, we've been given a choice. We've been told that we can do this electronically, we can do the scan electronically, send it out to people, to groups, and have people fill them out, but that it makes more sense if we have the time, and I'm committed to making the time, to go out to groups. I have made, I have made the decision that I am going to go out to groups and talk to groups about what we do. So in order to do the scan, what I'm going to do is I'm going to meet with people, I'm going to go out to them, talk to them, and ask them questions. And I brought copies, hard copies of the scan, because I think that it's important for you to see what those, what the questions are. And I know that, I know that you don't like to have a lot of paper, so I didn't bring a lot of them. I brought three or four of them, so that you can have a look at them, and so that you know what kinds of questions I will be asking. So then we get, so I will come to you and ask you, as trustees, to participate in the scan, to meet with me and talk with me, and it's totally voluntary, so if you can tell me what your thoughts are about what mental health needs are in our school from your perspective. When I am finished asking all the different groups about their views, I would like to talk to the research department, our research department, to ask them, and I'll send it back to Erica along the way, to help me to look at all the results that we, that I get and see what it means, what does it look like. I'm also aware that the schools have done other kinds of surveys through Our Kids Network, tell them about me, those surveys are out there, so I know that we have a lot of rich information that will help me to understand what we're about, okay? So that when I'm finished with the scan, then it is my job to send the results of the scan, one scan, to Mental Health Assist, to tell them this is where we're at. And from there, we will move forward. We will look at doing what we call resource mapping. We will look at what are we actually doing specifically in our schools, so that we can see which of the programs we're doing are evidence-based, which ones are giving us good results, and which ones we might like to look at. This is a many-year project, three to five years, in terms of getting to a point where we are able to identify what our needs are and how best to meet those needs. And you can read that, you can read it on your, in the paper that you have. Okay, so I think that it's important to let you know that our board has worked really hard, and we have made many strides forward in the last number of years. And I just wanted to give you just a brief glimpse of what those, some of those things are, and this isn't all by any chance. It is just some of the highlights. We have developed a mental health policy. Many boards don't have their policies written yet. We have one. We have a mental health leadership team. At this point, we're looking to expand the membership of our leadership team. We would like to include someone from the community. We would like to include a trustee, if a trustee would like to sit with us. Brendan Brown has agreed to sit with us. So we're looking at making the committee larger and more representative of the people that we serve. So we have students on the committee, we have four students on the committee, we have parents on the committee, we have special education resource teachers, we have high school principals, elementary principals, so we have a broad range of people on our mental health leadership team. We have policies in place, such as Safe and Inclusive Schools, bullying prevention, equity and inclusive education. We have identified stakeholders in our community, such as Rock, Woodview. At each of our schools, we have two mental health leaders, and I believe that this has been before this committee already, so you know who the mental health leaders are, and you know the work, the very good work they've done. you know the work, the very good work they've done at their schools. We've had training for those mental health leaders. We've had presentations by community agencies coming in to talk to our schools and our staff about what kinds of services they provide and how students and parents can access those services. In November two thousand and twelve, Patricia Kardner and Oliver Foizie presented at the parent conference, and they did an amazing job. When I looked at the exit, uh, the exit tickets that were filled out, they were so positive and so encouraging, that I think that that also speaks to the good work that has been done. Um, in May of this year, students came before you to tell you about what they had been doing as part of the mental health leadership team. They did a video and they showed it to you, and that was done in conjunction with, again, Patricia and Oliver through the leadership team. You know about PPM one forty-nine, that we've been working hard at extending our, um, our liaison with agencies. Uh, in May two thousand and thirteen, uh, support staff and psych staff went to a psychology conference, and the focus was on student suicide. Doctor Sam Pucher has come to see us and worked with us around, uh, mental health in children. Uh, staff have been involved in, uh, assist training, and assist training is around suicide prevention. And right now, we're looking at how we're going to develop that further. Our staff have been involved in the violence threat with assessment, and we have reviewed all of our evidence-based programs that we are right now providing in our schools. The crisis, uh, the compassionate care and crisis response team model is in review right now. We're almost at the end, almost ready, uh, to hand out the final documents. Our attendance protocol is being reviewed, and again, attendance, because our kids who are habitually absent typically, there are mental health issues that go along with that, and we're trying to make those connections. Uh, we have membership on the Crown Ward Education Championship Team, and that's a team that is a provincial-wide group that, uh, representatives from all our school boards participate in. And the goal of that group is to look at helping Crown Wards in our system make it to post-secondary education. We've been involved in anti-bullying, uh, initiatives that you're aware of. And also, the last thing that I wrote is that we're just finishing, um, a project around, uh, working with the CAS around duty to report, so that people, everybody, all adults within our school system know what our responsibilities are as adults when we see child abuse or when we are concerned about child abuse. So, that's where we're at. So my task right now is to do the board scan. I am preparing to do it. I've had an opportunity to meet with two or three groups. I've met with my mental health leadership team, and we've done the scan. And I've met with a group of, um, child and youth counselors, uh, who I supervise, so we've done that as well. I've also had an opportunity to meet with a couple of principals. So I have three very good, good pieces of information to start with, and I will welcome the opportunity to talk to anybody else who would be interested in participating. Thank you, madam.
Thank you very much, Patricia. It's a very informative discussion of a huge topic.
Huge.
Thank you. Uh, any questions, Patricia? Questions or comments? Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Uh, thank you, Patricia. It's very interesting. Uh, I do have a question on the suicide assist training. Um, when, when you say staff, which staff in particular are we talking about? Are we talking about all teachers throughout the system, or are we talking about key people in the school?
Key people. The social workers have been trained, um, some of the psychology staff, and some of the C Y C staff have been trained. And that training happened as recently as I would think about three weeks ago. Well, that's a really important question, because what we're trying to do is, and we're meeting on December the fifth with, um, our, with the folks at the Hamilton, at the Halton District School Board, to talk about that, because there's another program called Safe Talk, that, uh, we're wondering whether that makes sense for us to do Safe Talk with teachers, so that teachers who know what Safe Talk is about, and what Safe Talk is about is having people who are open to listening to children, and then being able to say, okay, this is where the referral goes, this is who needs to help you, so that they can guide children to people who are trained as assist train, uh, who are trained with suicide assist. And then from there, then they would be able to go to the social workers or to the hospitals or whatever, uh, makes sense. So we are looking at the possibility of Safe Talk, and it's a discussion that we're having right now. No decision has been made about that.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much, Patricia.
Thank you, madam.
Phenomenal job. We look forward to hearing back from you. Thank you.
I look forward to coming back to talk to you. I think that we will be seeing a lot of each other over the next few years.
That sounds good from our end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Of the minutes of November the fifth, uh, six point one, may I have a mover, please? Trustee Morrison, seconded, trustee Marai. Any questions pertaining to the minutes? None? All in favor? Thank you. Uh, business arising from previous meetings, page fifty-six, item seven point one. Any comments on that? If you stick where to find it, it'll be helpful. All right, so basically, it's just the social tech and me, social media. No questions on that? Okay, thank you. Uh, action items, eight point one, policy one dash zero six, delegation to the board. Trustee Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee and approve policy one dash zero six, delegation to the board as amended.
Vienna, seconded by trustee Marai. Any questions? You will remember, of course, that this was at the board table a few weeks back, and it went back to policy. So here we are again. So are there any questions or comments on the, uh, suggested policy? Nope? Trustee Marai?
Just a comment. I think, um, I think we're quite satisfied, or at least I'm satisfied, with the changes that the policy committee made. Um, with seventy meetings throughout the year, this allows for actually eighty-five delegations. And if there's a very hot topic, it allows for the, uh, the chair of the board to allow for even more. So I think, um, it definitely allows for ample public input, which is, uh, the concern that I think a lot of the trustees around the table raised.
To trustee Vienna?
Um, I was very, very delighted, not happy, but delighted, but when we see the, our tru- student trustees, when they vote in favor of that, that makes me very, very happy. Thank you.
On that? Nope? All in favor? Thank you. Uh, action item eight point two, policy one dash thirty-one apparel purchases and fair labor practices. Trustee Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee and approve policy one dash three one apparel purchases and fair labor practices as amended.
Thank you. A mover, please. Trustee Vienna, seconded by Madam Vice Chair. Thank you. Any questions pertaining to item eight point two? Comments? None? All in favor? Thank you. As staff rep- we do not appear to have any, so going to information items. Uh, ten point one, student trustee update. Trustee Erica.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Jason Maria and I had the opportunity to attend the Osta Eko Fall General Meeting in Toronto on the weekend. It was an awesome experience, and we definitely learned a lot about various potential initi- initiatives that we could introduce this year. Also, this morning, we had our Give Respect to Get Respect Anti-Bullying Launch at Sean Benier, which was extremely successful. This gave various students across the board information on the campaign and an opportunity to brainstorm ideas that they can bring back to their schools. We would also like to thank Ms. Pennelli and Mr. Negro for their help in the planning process, as well as Ms. Dawson for attending. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to our student trustees? Comments, questions? No? Okay, thank you. Uh, ten point two, school educational trips. Superintendent Pennelli?
Sorry about that, Madam Chair. Uh, please find attached, uh, two field trips, uh, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
These trips are getting more expensive. For the, uh, June third to fifth, which was what, two days? Third, fourth, and fifth, three days, I guess, four days? Six hundred dollars. They just seem to be getting more expensive. Or maybe I'm just getting older.
Hope they make the arrangements to attend mass. Don't mention nothing in our report. Saint Patrick. Yeah, sorry, I apologize.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. I present the Elementary School Uniform Information Report. For your review at the February two thousand and thirteen board meeting, the board amended, uh, its policy two dash forty-one, school uniform dress code, school dress. I've provided for you a list of schools who were required, uh, by the policy to hold a vote in the spring, as well as schools that although not required, were eligible to hold a vote. Ultimately, nineteen of our elementary schools voted this past spring, with thirteen achieving the required fifty percent plus one majority of parents in favor. Uh, a summary of the votes and percentages for each school are provided in appendix A for you. The thirteen new s- uniformed schools have been added to our four existing uniformed schools to bring our total number to seventeen. I've also provided you a timeline of events, uh, beginning in the spring with the community information nights held at each school, as well with our RJ McCarthy mobile store sites. I've also provided, uh, an example of the RJ McCarthy, uh, flyer that was sent out to school communities as well in the summer. Uh, a challenge for this implementation, as many of you are aware, uh, was the, uh, some of the ordering and backordering, uh, issues with McCarthy's. Um, by September first, uh, we had ninety percent of orders that were made at McCarthy's delivered, so we had a ten percent backorder ratio. By October the eighteenth, it was ninety-five percent of our orders were, were, uh, delivered. As of today, the most recent information I have is ninety-nine point nine eight percent of all orders are in. Having s- I, and I, and I, having said that, uh, there are a lot of orders, so that point zero two percent still represents several hundred items that are on backorder. Uh, so, uh, as you can imagine, for those families that are waiting, uh, it is no consolation that they're, they're part of that zero point two. Uh, McCarthy's has, uh, dealt with all families individually, uh, in some cases providing significant discounts or promotions for future purchases. They have also, uh, uh, going forward, uh, ha- have standardized their, their policy for any orders that are backordered for more than fourteen days, they provide fifteen percent, uh, discount to that order. Going forward, we've, uh, uh, as per the requirement of the policy, we have sixteen elementary schools that are eligible to vote in the spring. Uh, they're not required, uh, because they've already held a vote. As per the policy, the only requirement is, is that a school have at least one vote. So they are eligible, uh, th- those principals will be notified by me, uh, in the coming weeks, that they will be required to have a consultation with their Catholic school councils, uh, with regard to whether they will hold the vote in the spring. And on October the eighteenth, Paula Dawson, our, our director, and myself, met with the president and CEO of McCarthy's, um, uh, Robert Bruce, and, uh, by his own admission, they have learned a lot from the implementation this year. They've guaranteed us that, uh, their learnings will, will mean that there will, will be fewer if, if no backorders or delays, uh, for next year, if we have the same number of schools that, that implement the uniform. And so I'm open to any questions regarding the report.
Thank you, Camillo. Any questions? None? Okay.
Thank you, madam.
Since we are on the right track, it seems to me for the uniform, I think we, we have to start thinking ahead to come with a uniform for the teachers. It should be, uh, one vest, four, four inches below the knee. Everybody's the same. And one color, female or female. You know, because, uh, I visit the schools lots of times, and I see some teachers, believe me, uh, I don't say nothing about it, but I, I feel sometimes, uh, asking questions to myself. We forcing the students and our own staff coming that way to the, to the classroom. So it should be, you know, let's think about it, you know, in one year or two, when all the schools are implemented, let's work on the teachers. They, they do wa- they are the ones who should give the example to their students. Thank you.
Anthony, and I shouldn't say Anthony, Ed. Do you not think I've been true enough without that? Honestly. Um, thank you, thank you. Uh, I also have a question for Camillo, please. Um, Camillo, with regard to the items, uh, being ordered, um, I've spoken to parents and certainly with the younger students, they've had an interest in the tracksuits and maybe a turtleneck, something like that, but certainly a lot easier for the younger children to get in and out of, uh, considering they've still got snowsuits and so forth. Um, when will that be an appropriate time to have that kind of conversation with McCarthy's?
Through you, Madam Chair, or to you, Madam Chair. Uh, schools through their school, Catholic school councils have the ability to add pieces to the uniform, uh, uh, menu, uh, for the following year. Um, and so, there is always a, a risk that if we add too many items, uh, that it fails to become uniform any, any longer in a school. So there, there is that balance, that in, in speaking with principals, you try and strike that balance of, uh, uh, offering, uh, uh, variability in pieces with, without, uh, that going over the tipping point where it, it, it really fails to become a uniform in the school any longer. But schools have that ability, uh, each and every year to add pieces to their, to their menu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, at a previous, our last board meeting, I briefly touched on, um, a response about, uh, social justice trips, so I thought I would bring back a, a more formalized report to outline, uh, where we are at with our, with our process. In June, the former director, Michael Poutler, prepared a report on June fourth to talk about some of the, uh, the past gathering of information, and he suggested at the end of his report that, uh, the next step for moving forward with any social justice trips needed to be like a scan or a gathering of information. And, uh, I mentioned at the previous board meeting that Tony Pennelli, superintendent, and I met with, with a group of people who had been on the Hopes, Dreams, and Meet-A-We trips, and we gathered information from them, and, uh, we made notes about some of the, some of the, the goods and the challenges that, uh, both any of those, uh, trips had. And so tonight, I'm formally coming forward to you, Madam Chair, to, to follow through on the suggestion from the director's report in June, in June, to ask for two superintendents to formally sit on this committee so we can move forward with, uh, making recommendations in the near future as to which trips, uh, our board will approve.
Thank you, Madam Director. Any questions? Comments on that?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Two trustees, sorry.
All right, so, um, that will be, uh, Danielle, so that we don't lose track of that. That would be two trustees to sit on the social justice trip. And I think Patricia also mentioned she wanted a trustee to sit on a, the mental health committee, the mental health committee. So we, we need to perhaps look into that, um, once we get the new list of openings in December, as to which trustees want to sit on which committees and so forth. Any questions for Madam Director? No? Uh, trustee Ro?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, would this committee, uh, develop, um, um, some, some broad criteria, uh, when evaluating it? And, and would that criteria come before the, uh, board of trustees?
Well, no trips are going to happen until this committee has done its work and it'd be approved, the top of the ones that are already approved.
Yeah, the ones that are in place for this year are approved for this year, but moving forward, when we set, set this committee in motion, that will define the parameters.
Um, Madam Chair, I think our bylaws-
Um, Madam Chair, I think our bylaws specify how a committee of the board is, is formed. Um, our bylaws specify how com- committees of the board are formed, and we haven't done that. So will something come forward to strike the committee?
Okay, so are we okay there, trustee Danko? Okay, all right. Thank you. Uh, so ten point five, Holton Student Transportation Services, and I, Superintendent McMahon?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent McMahon? It's a good meeting, very good meeting. And we also met, uh, with the City of Burlington to discuss, uh, some issues pertaining to Burlington and transportation. And that was also a good meeting, again, both boards, um, with the city. So that was very good. Uh, ten point six, Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we wanted to bring forward an update on our financial reporting, uh, to the Ministry of Education. Um, we've requested an extension to our twelve thirteen financial statements as outlined in the, in the report for the reasons stated. Um, and with thanks to a lot of work that, uh, Roxanna has done, she's sitting at the back there. Um, and, uh, so we hope to bring both, uh, the financial statements and the revised estimates to the second board meeting, uh, in December. I've also, uh, because we like to work it in three years at once, um-
Okay, well, I'll think. Go ahead.
Um, I, uh, actually included some of the consultation information that had been disseminated. Um, there was, there's actually two consultations pieces. One is around the school board efficiencies and modernization consultations, which there's a document attached as a appendix E. Um, and then also the consultations that we had brought into our, uh, form Minister College, the trustees are aware, which is more around the future of education, the problems, and the, um, grade to excellent strategy, uh, of the ministry. So I wanted to bring those forward this time because, uh, the, the, um, S B E M and other act and school board that's the modernization consultations are in fact, uh, a leading to the, the G S N, the grant for student needs for the twenty fourteen, fifteen estimate. So I thought I would provide, um, that information as well, Madam Chair, and myself, Roxanna, we'd be happy to.
Any questions for Paula Rockden? Trustee Roe?
Thank you. Uh, through you, Madam Chair. Would the G S Ns, um, G S Ns be, um, dependent on, on some kind of strategy that, that the board has to develop for the, uh, S B E M thing? Sorry, just, just for clarification. So, um, the idea is that, that this report, um, which represents the, all the boards, um, is meant as information for the ministry to decide on, on streamlining or, or, um, adjusting the G S Ns in the future? To, to a certain level, or is it, um, are they just gonna just take a look at this information and see how it will be, uh, implemented?
Through you, Madam Chair.
Please, uh, Systems Faith Day verbal update. Superintendent Nah?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to provide you with some updates, and I will send out an email tomorrow morning just to confirm, um, details around, uh, our Systems Faith Day. Um, but we are excited. We are just a few days away from it. So, uh, this coming Friday, um, we will all be together at Cops Coliseum. Uh, we have, I believe our numbers are sitting at, uh, three thousand one hundred and fifty people attending. Um, we have a parent evening taking place at Holy Trinity, uh, at seven o'clock. And then Friday morning, the doors will open at Cops Coliseum at eight-thirty. Uh, we're using the Bay Street entrance, so, um, if any of you need specific directions, we'll send the specifics out tomorrow. Uh, but you go into the Bay Street entrance and if you take the escalators down to the ground floor, I think everyone's got a ticket at their place that says C E C, and you're at the floor level. Um, the ushers, uh, let them know who you are. They've got your names on lists. And they will, um, give you a lanyard, so it'll, it'll say guest on it, and that's because, uh, lunch will be served in, we're calling it the Blue Room. I don't know what they call it at Cops Coliseum, but we've labeled it the Blue Room. So this lanyard is sort of your backstage pass to get, um, into the back area when it is lunchtime, and we'll take you back there. Um, the, um, seating is on the floor section. The ice is in, uh, because it is hockey season, so just a reminder that you're on a subfloor. Um, but if, if you tend to have cold feet, you might wear some warm socks with you. Um, I'll leave that to you to, to, uh, dress accordingly. Um, but we're very excited about it. If you have any specific questions that, uh, I'm happy to answer them tonight, or certainly, um, you can email me any questions that you have for yourself.
Thank you, Laurie. Any questions pertaining to that? No? Okay, thank you. Look forward to seeing you all there. Uh, ten point eight, construction reports. Superintendent Kabachio?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have, uh, four reports before you this evening. The first one being Jean Vanyé, and the school's essentially completed the building itself. What's remained to be done is the exterior work being done by the Town of Milton for their field house and their, uh, air-supported dome. And we'll also be able to, uh, we'll be completing our rubberized track surface in the spring, uh, because of the, uh, inclement weather we have now. The next report on St. Anne's, it will be, um, we're still working in that front lobby, and because we want to avoid interference with the students, it's taken some time, but we're hoping by the end of, uh, this month, early December, that work will be done. And then you have the construction reports for Milton Five and Milton Seven, and the foundations are well underway. And we're on pace to be ready, uh, to open those schools, uh, next September. And the other good, uh, news that we received, yesterday we got the building permit for the, uh, full day kindergarten program, project that we're doing at St. Anthony of Potawa and at Guardian Angels, and those projects, uh, have started immediately. And they'll also be ready for next September. If you please answer any questions of trustees' behalf.
Thank you, General. Any questions? No questions? Okay, thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. To the trustees, uh, present to you the, uh, minutes of our last meeting. Just, uh, a few addendums. Uh, there was, there were some really positive comments from C P- CPIC on, uh, the Council of Chairs Evening. They were very, very pleased. In fact, the very next day, they went to the ministry's version of the consultation and thought that, uh, our setup was a little better. So, uh, we were quite pleased to hear that. And I want to thank you all for your participation that night. From my own perspective, having done lots of work in parent engagement across the province, I have never seen, actually, that level of collaboration with so many different stakeholders in the same room and, uh, collaborating on, on important work. So it's a wonderful tradition that you have here, and I, I hope that we never get rid of it. Um, and one other thing that happened since, uh, we last met is that, uh, the People for Education Conference happened in Toronto, and we had good representation from Holton Catholic. We had one of the CPIC members, Rosemary Stagg, attend, as well as trustee Marai and, uh, myself. So it was a good day. The theme, uh, for the day was First Nations, Metis, and Inuit education. Uh, that was the focus, and it was a very, very worthwhile conference. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to take them.
This item, which is, uh, the Policy Committee Minutes. Madam Director and Superintendent Supriano?
Madam Director, the minutes are there for, uh, for review and approval. Any questions?
Any questions? Hello? Any comments to add? I have any correspondence, but Madam Director has a couple of comments to make, so-
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, for giving me this opportunity. I just wanted to make the trustees known, uh, know about this important event that's happening tomorrow. And, uh, so, uh, trustee, or Superintendent Herman and myself are leaving after this meeting to head to Richmond Hill. And our board has been asked by one, and we're one of four boards making a presentation at this conference called Quest in Richmond Hill. And, uh, along with us, uh, tomorrow, we have, uh, students from Corpus Christi who will be in attendance and helping present with us. We have a principal from Our Lady of Peace. And, uh, we have videos that were done, uh, recently with the help of Mr. Negro from students and teachers from St. Anthony, Bishop Reading, and Laola. And, uh, special mention to Erica for her help in, in gathering some data for us and helping us prepare our presentation. And perhaps when we come back, we can show the trustees some of these, uh, great videos that we're sharing tomorrow at this conference.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Okay, thank you. Uh, we do not have, um, any questions from the public. Uh, we have now in camera. A resolution regarding absentee, so a motion to excuse Allison. Trustee Vienna, seconded by trustee Marai. All in favor? Thank you. Yes, a motion to adjourn. Trustee Morrison, seconded by trustee Vienna. All in favor? Thank you. And we ask trustee Marai to close us with a prayer.
Close that, um, Hail Mary, the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee, that thou shalt not curse. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for her to enter the womb.
Thank you. So just a reminder, we have two consultations tomorrow, one in Burlington and one in Oakville. Uh, Thursday, we have Dr. Groom, uh, talking to parents at Holy Trinity. And Friday, uh, we have the P A Day at Cops Coliseum. So please have a safe drive.